Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a notice of a public meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Monday, February 6, 2023. The time is 5:30 PM. The purpose of this meeting is for the city council and have the public review the final draft of the our rental code ordinance. And so I'm going to read the advertisement that was placed in the paper, Miss Sabre Daily News on 12523 and on 2123, and the Hometown Focus on 23 of 23. Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Virginia and the Virginia Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public meeting Monday, February 6, 2023, at 5:30 PM at the Virginia City Hall Council Chambers, 327 First Street South relating to the property city ordinance, Section 10.39, Chapter 10, entitled Rental Registration and Inspection Ordinance and the Proposed Fee Schedule. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file and available for public inspection during regular business hours at the Office of the City Clerk at the Virginia City Hall, right here at 327 First Street South in Virginia, and on the city website at www.r virginia mn.us. That's www.r virginia mn.us. And for those who are in the audience today, there are copies of the rental code ordinance by the podium. If you haven't received one, you're welcome to grab one and go through it as we discuss this or this new ordinance. So all interested parties may appear at this public hearing and present their views orally or in writing. And Pam, have you received any public comments or anything written or oral regarding the meeting regarding this rental code ordinance?
No, I have not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So the purpose of me to discuss this, so I will open this up for discussion by the council. And as we move through this and have any questions or comments about that, we'll discuss that. If we need any legal clarification, we have our city attorney present here, Mr. Brian Lindsay. And then we can hear from the general public as well. But this is the proposed rental course has been our staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission have worked very hard putting this thing together. It's been a long, arduous process. It's been going on for 18 months. So we're at the final phase here. And also in the audience, we have a representative from the fire department and from the police department as well. So I think we have Jacob Keel, who is our fire marshal, and then we have our Assistant Chief Chad Nakle present as well. So with that being said, I'll open this up for additional discussion. Anybody have any questions, comments from the from the city council about this ordinance or any anything that you'd like to say in concert with any of the articles that are appear in this draft ordinance that it's in its final draft mode. So we'll be looking to take action at a future meeting. That being said, any council have any questions or comments about the? And as you as you review it and as you go through it, I don't see any lights on right now. I'm sure we'll have some comments about that. So it seems we have nothing from the council at this point in time. Does anybody from the Planning and Zoning Commission wish to speak? If not, we'll hold that in abeyance. And does anybody from the audience have any questions or comments about the ordinance as it is written? Please come forward if you would please. I would, we would appreciate that very much. We are streaming this live, so the other people can hear. So if you would just turn the light on to green. And please state your name for the record and welcome to the meeting.
Sarah Weddell.
Sarah O'Dell.
Sarah, S.A.R.A. Weddell, and then W.E.D.D.L.
Okay, Weddell. Thank you very much.
I think it's good. I grew up in a city that had something similar, and I know the lives of people there were generally increased. You know, they were better off because of it, because of the landlords having to keep up a certain code. So I think it's a really good thing.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anything else?
No.
Thanks for, thank you for your comments. Okay. Anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak? Once again, like I said, this is a public meeting for us to invite the public one more time. We've had other sessions to talk about this moving forward. And so we're looking for questions, comments before we move forward with action at a future meeting. Counselor Johnson.
Mayor, I'd like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission and your countless, countless hours reviewing this and talking about it and bringing it back. And our previous planning person, John Sullivan, with the hours he spent researching the public meetings we had last year throughout the summer. I'm personally very excited about this. I have had to live in some of the rentals in Virginia that have been quite challenging. I have had people come to me and say, you know, how am I going to be able to afford to meet these standards? And my answer to them has been, we just want these apartments safe enough that your grandma can live in them. And that's what we're at here, is getting standard apartments to a standard where they're safe, where the windows aren't broken, where the heat works, where the water works where it's supposed to work. And and the landlords that I know who live locally are doing that. I think that as we move forward with this, we're going to find that our property values will increase because the general condition of these homes will increase. It's going to be a transition. There'll be, there'll be more staff coming onboard. There'll be, it'll take a while for us to get this up and running completely. But the amount of time, if I remember correctly, and Mayor, you'd probably know this, maybe Carl, you would, Counselor Littlewolf started this process the first time many years ago, if I remember correctly. And then it kind of got put on hold, and then we've taken it back up. I think, Mary, you were on the council then as well. So this is not something we're coming by lightly. It's not something that we're throwing together. The research has been done, and I have to say, I'm proud of what they have done. The folks have done incredible work on it. And I think it's going to help the city of Virginia become a safer, more welcoming community as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. You know, we, this research wasn't done lightly, and I echo what Counselor Johnson indicated about the planning and zoning's hard work on this, along with our former planning and zoning, our, our, our planning director, John Sullivan. What we are going to be doing here is we're doing with other communities have already done, other communities that already have these ordinances in effect. And with the research that was done through our staff, through planning and zoning, and through all of us, that we've determined, we discovered that this is a pretty solid ordinance, a pretty standard type of ordinance with fee schedules and things of that nature moving forward. There are certain compliance issues, and there's benchmarks that must be made. But it unless you're, unless there's a landlord who's not maintaining the responsibilities of their properties that they own, this ordinance shouldn't be pretty easy to follow, for the exception of the, the fees associated with, with the registration and those kind of things. But I think they're reasonable and they're prudent, and they're in line with what other cities have done in the past. Now, after this meeting, we're going to, we'll probably discuss, we might discuss a little bit more tomorrow at our, our, maybe the whole meeting. It's not scheduled for that, but other, I'm concerned, we can talk about what we did at this meeting. But once we, once we pass this ordinance, which we have to formally do at a council meeting, and it is anticipated that after this meeting on February 14th at our council meeting, we will take action to approve the rental code ordinance. After that, it goes into the newspaper, and, and after, after it's published in the paper, 15 days from that point in time, after publication of the newspaper, the ordinance automatically goes into effect. So just to give you an update on how that's going to go, and so we're looking right around March 6th or, or 7th moving forward. So to put the advertisements in, right? Need two readings first. That's right. We have to have two readings. So we're, so it's going down the road. So this is the final meeting that we're having with the public and amongst ourselves about how we're going to move forward. This is our chance, your chance, to look at the ordinance and outline anything that you have concerns about or questions about. Because once this goes into effect, you know, we'll be reviewing it on occasion as the ordinance moves forward. And as we, as this ordinance takes effect, and we'll continue to review it to determine if anything needs to be tweaked or any additional amendments or addendums have to be made. But overall, this is the, going to be the final draft for this ordinance. So anybody have any questions? Please come forward. Mr. Byrd, a longtime member of our Planning and Zoning Commission, Don Byrd, welcome to the meeting.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to bring up, we had some questions. I've had some questions, excuse me, not just tonight, but in the last few weeks, about the fee schedule. And if you look at the, it's the last page in your booklet there. And if you look at the 2014, which was when this was first discussed, it's basically double on everything, and I think to a certain extent, we all understand that, just the way prices are right now and everything. But if you look at the total on the bottom of the 2022, actually be 2023 proposed now, the idea there is to support two full-time employees. And you can imagine going into a house and inspecting the time it's going to be involved. And you just can't, the city just can't eat that cost. So the idea was that this amount should cover that. And just wanted to clarify why the number is what it is. You're not going to absorb it. We met with the city engineering department and discussed this with Christina and a few other ones. So wanted to pass that on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Yes, our planning permitting and enforcement aspect, we used to be called our city engineering department, will be monitoring and, and really looking at this ordinance and managing the ordinance. But in order to enforce the ordinance and manage it, I think we're going to need some additional personnel, which to do that, to properly vet and, and address all the concerns and complaints that not only tenants have, but landlords, however, or other people from the general public. So it is a cost benefit analysis that we're, that we're employing here, so. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. And this might be for Mr. Byrd, if you don't mind. So on the fee schedule, it does say 2022. So those numbers at the very bottom tallies, it's number of locations is 460. Is that 460 different locations of rental units? And then the number of apartments? And then the total number of units overall in Virginia is 1,609 units? Is that how, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah. Would you come to the podium, please? Would you just come to the podium, please, and see if you can answer that question, get a clarification from your staff? We are streaming this live, so the general public can hear it too. Thank you, Mr. Byrd.
Yeah, I just, I guess I can't answer your, your question, Ms. Paulson, but the 460, it's the number of locations. I think that's locations, and some are going to obviously have, like the Columbia, and some of them are going to have, I don't know what's in there, 50, 100. So this is the number of locations, total number of apartments. We got this number, I want to say, through engineering, but I'm not 100% sure.
And I think that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, no, I get it. Maybe Mary might have an handle on it a little better than.
Sorry to put you on the spot, you guys.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you.
Further, general public, this is Mary McReynolds, a part of our Planning and Zoning Commission. Mary, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I've been privileged to chair the Planning and Zoning Commission for the last few years. Some of the information that we got from John Sullivan going into the process of reviewing and updating the rental code, Virginia has a total of 4,665 dwellings. Forty percent of those are rental occupied. So that gets you a little closer to the number of actual units that I'm, I think that 2014 numbers were accurate for the time, but I think the city has updated the list and it'll be better.
So we should be able, I guess in doing the math, we should be able to, as we look forward on this fee schedule, I guess I wanted just to confirm what the actual numbers are, as close to the actual numbers as possible. So we then would understand how that, the final revenue number where that target may or may not land. And I appreciate you guys taking the consideration for the employee part of it, the two FTEs. So I just was trying to see if the numbers have changed dramatically, or if we could, if that is pretty much an expected revenue.
It's, it's my understanding that it would be pretty close. We, we have a, the city has a pretty good handle on the number of rental units out there. This ordinance will be getting us closer and, and be more detailed as people register and, and buildings are inspected. So, yeah, it'll be a lot tighter.
Thank you, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just wanted to make sure as we move forward that I can just understand the numbers with the fee schedule. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Can't, thank you, Mary. Thank you, Don. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Now, you're, you are able to comment after the meeting, too. You can send your comments in once you read through the thing before we take formal action, and we will certainly consider all comments that come in after this meeting is over. I'm sorry, Mary?
I just wanted to note, there are a couple typos, you know, like the end of the word has an S instead of a D, and some tabbing formatting, things that need to be worked out. And I assume that that will be done before it gets published in the paper.
It will. Thank you for pointing that out. Counselor Friedley.
Yeah, I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Committee or Commission all the time and effort. The revenue that can be raised for the city, I, the intended, you know, the positive expected outcomes are all well-intended and certainly going to be positive on behalf of anybody that's living in a unit. My only concern, whether it's legitimate or not, is the potential unintended consequence. That being that if landlords are now going to be incurring costs that they previously had not had to, somewhat in the thousands of dollars for multiple units, is it safe to assume that those costs then are going to be passed on to the renters? And costs of renting an apartment in Virginia is potentially, that's one concern that I have. I don't know if any landlord wants to speak in regard to that or not, or how impacting it is for you to incur these costs. That's my concern, is are we going to potentially force people out of apartments because it's going to cost more for them to live there because of the cost that all the landlords will be incurring that they hadn't in the past?
Thank you, Counselor Friedley. Mr. Byrd? Or Mary?
After working with John Sullivan quite a bit on this, and by the way, we miss him.
We do.
You know, we followed pretty much the Grand Rapids, and I believe Duluth. And the understanding from John was that there was not any significant change in the rent. So that's about all I can tell you about that.
Mary?
I think I did a little bit of math on that, and I, and it looked like it mostly worked out to like less than $5 a month difference. I understand if there's significant issues, once the inspection is there, that have to be brought up to code, that would be an additional expense for the landlord, but something that should be done anyway. And improving their property only allows them to, to have a little more income from it as well.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Don. Counselor Motley.
So I'm new to the council, but I door knocked for about five months throughout the whole city of Virginia, minus a couple streets. And the absolute overwhelming majority of our citizens' complaints was the rental properties and not feeling safe in their community. So hopefully, the positive outcomes from this potentially pass, passing absolutely outweighs the, the things that potentially the cost incurs. But we need to do something, and hopefully this is a positive change going forward. And I guess we'll see.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Motley. You know, this isn't designed to punish anybody. This is designed to ensure that we have a safe and secure living environment for everybody. And, and these aren't the exact percentages, this is just my, my thoughts. So I would say 98% of the landlords in the city of Virginia are very, very qualified. They do a very good job. They run a really good rental properties. There's just a small percentage of landlords that don't, some of the absentee landlords or others, that run properties that, that have not been up to the property preservation and maintenance code that was passed in 2017. And we'll, and that's why these inspectors are for. Those who are operating great facilities never going to have a problem other than the additional costs associated with the annual fee for inspections. And that's to cover the cost of the inspectors that are moving forward. This is not a revenue stream for the city. It's just going to cover the cost to provide that service of inspections. But for those landlords who do not maintain their properties, and, and the concerns that we get from some of the renters, from landlords, there's very, very small percentage of those who rent properties in Virginia that are not responsible. Ninety, like most everybody is, but then that small percentage is an issue. And they will be, they'll, that cost will likely be borne by them and have the most, most effect on those landlords who have not been keeping up the properties as, you know, they should, in accordance with the property preservation maintenance code, and in accordance with this new rental code that's going into effect. Our job is to provide a safe and secure environment for everybody, a fire marshal's concerns, the police department's concerns, the general condition of the properties, the neighbors' their concerns, and the concerns of the tenants as well. This, this ordinance is designed to address all those concerns that people might have. Like I said before, in my, my opinion only, there's a small, very small percentage of individuals who are landlords who are not responsible. Most of, most of all you sitting here today, and those are out in the public, run a good ship. And what is the percentage of our, our rental properties is really high in Virginia. So it's important that we maintain the integrity of the people that are living there and the integrity of the structures moving forward. So thank you very much, everybody, for coming. And I still, additional comments or questions, please come forward before we close this meeting. Okay. Okay, please come forward. And the, the green light is on. And sir, would you please state your name for the record and welcome to this meeting?
Derek Biorgo.
Mr. Erdal.
Me. I'm just curious as to the fee structure. So you have a tallied number here to propose numbers, and I'm curious to know, do we have separate inspection fee? Or is this combined as a licensing fee for the three-year period? This is a three-year term for a landlord? So per unit, let's say a single-family home, $300 every three years, correct? And that uncovers the inspection, reinspection, and the licensing?
I, I believe that if there, if you pay it a fee in here and it's inspected, and it's, and it's considered to be, you know, you're good to go for that three years. And all of a sudden, there's a complaint where we have to go and inspect something and ask for a correction. There may be, there's a fee schedule for that, I believe.
And like it's clearly outlined as far as like the $330 per unit or the charges on the back page in correspondence with how those fees are laid out for each property type?
Yes.
We're going to have an initial inspection, then you have a licensing for the landlord itself. Is that a combined fee in the 330? Are those separate? What are those charges? When are they procuring for the tenant landlord situations?
And it's my understanding, and you could correct me if there's a change in that, that's an all-inclusive cost associated with that. If there's a complaint later on down the road where nothing's being done, or say there's an inspection that a tenant wants to inspect it, or our court official finds it, or somebody sees there's an awning that falls off a house or something like that, we'll have to go inspect that. There may be a fee for, for a reinspection of that after, after there's a correction notice made.
The last thing was, I've been dealing in some short-term rentals, and it seems that Virginia has a parking issue.
We do.
And it's not just with rental properties.
Right.
I'm curious why the landlords are taking the brunt of that rental parking fee of $100 for missed parking opportunities per parcel. It's not just a city of Virginia problem. So that's kind of, that burden's falling onto landlords, and that seems a little, little tedious because you've got homeowners with boats and trailers and fish houses parked in their yard. And here, I'm running this, this little operation that's actually reducing the amount of traffic on a treat, and I'm getting neighbors coming to me about guest parking and certain issues. And I've handled those issues, created opportunities for guests to park off-street, and trying to be collaborative with the neighborhood in that. But again, that's not a, that's not a landlord issue, in my opinion. That's a, that's a citywide issue that needs to be addressed. And I'm just, for that burden to fall on the landlords doesn't seem quite fair, in my opinion. So want to address that as well.
Okay, we'll, we'll have to take a look at that. Thank you very much. So the parking aspect, there's a fee associated with parking. If you have so many parking spots for, per unit, is that correct? Mary, would you please come forward? And could you clarify that for us, please?
Yes, thank you. On page five of the ordinance, there's required spaces for parking based on the bedroom, number of bedrooms in the unit or the dwelling. And after the initial public hearings that we had, we did revise that and move it down, which will help both the landlords and be probably a little more conducive for people that, you know, say it's a single mom renting a two-bedroom apartment. So there's no need for two spaces for that. The $100 fee is if, say, if a four-bedroom unit can't provide two spaces, if they have to, if there is not room on the property, then the $100 fee would be for that non-conforming parking space that would be missing.
Hey, thank you.
Makes sense?
It, it, yeah, I understand the concept of it. Thank you. And I guess that poses a question for me as well about, you know, I don't necessarily think we should be charging parking spaces, extra parking spaces on the street for people who rent as opposed to people who own, might have five or six cars, and they park two on the street, two off-street parking. So, but so, we need to look at that as well. I'd like some answers for that, too. Sir, please come forward, state your name, and welcome.
Hey, I'm Matt Puringer. So with those fees, as Derek was asked, they're due every three years? Right?
Your three-year fee, yeah, three years.
So this annual revenue of 286,200, that's going to have to be divided by three to get your annual revenue. So I don't see how you're going to afford staffing and all this kind of stuff, right?
I might, would you repeat that, please?
Well, these numbers here, you have these as annual, right? But you're saying that the fees are every three years? I kind of want to know how much I'm going to be paying, how often, I guess.
I'd like to know that, too, sir.
All right.
Let's, let's take a look at what's, do we have an answer there? Anybody from Planning and Zoning, do we have an answer for that? Name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Roger Hoffman. I'm former on the commission.
Yes, sir.
What we discussed in the meeting was, when we went over these fees, these are annual fees, the license is good for three years. And that's where the, you know, the $5 a month kind of thing came for the additional expenses. But the fees are an annual fee, and the license What we discussed in the meeting was, when we went over these fees, these are annual fees, the license is good for three years. And that's where the, you know, the $5 a month kind of thing came for the additional expenses. But the fees are an annual fee, and the license, as stated in here, this is also subject to what the council decides to do. And that's in here on.
So for clarification, Mr. Hoffman, the proposed fees, there's a three-year license, right?
Correct.
You pay a licensing fee, but the annual fees are...
What is stated on the list here for 2022.
So they'll pay the licensing fee plus the per-unit fee. And they pay that annually. So you get a three-year license, but they're paying as additional annual fee for their unit, is that correct?
Correct.
How is the annual fee laid out? Where is it laid out? Yeah. Good question.
Fees will be adopted by the council in the overall fee schedule that the council has. So that, they'll be included in that, in the proposed fees are what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended.
Right, I think the question is, they pay a license, three-year licensing fee, X amount of dollars, and how much is that licensing fee for three years?
They pay per year. The fee is, the fee is an annual fee. The license, the license is good for three years as long as there's no violations that would cause it to be revoked. So the license is good for three years, the fee is an annual fee.
So they get the license for three years, but it's broken down annually?
Right.
Okay, they're inspected every three years, so the license fee is for three years, but the fee schedule as we have is an annual basis?
The license itself is good for three years.
Right.
The fee is an annual fee.
An annual fee. So if you take a look at this fee schedule, say, for you have a two-unit apartment, you have a three-year license, how much is there, how much are they paying annually then for So if it's $300 per unit, that's broken down annually, so it's $100 instead of $300, correct? No? I guess I'm confused. $300 per unit per year? So if you have a apartment complex with, has 56 people in it, they pay $300 for each of those 56 people? Apartments, dwellings, units, units. So whether it's a one-bedroom, or a two-bedroom, or three, it's a unit, so they would pay $300 per unit, so $300 times 56, they play that on an annual basis? I'm sorry? But anything under five units is... Okay, per year, per unit annually. So a gentleman, or a landlord has, a landlord has a fourplex, okay? And they pay per unit. So what would they pay annually, per unit, for the fourplex?
$200 per unit, so that would be eight.
That's $800 a year, times three, $2,400 a year.
No, they would pay eight hundred per year, so the total for that...
Times three, $2,400 over the three-year period.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. It's a lot of money.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm, now I'm getting confused as well. So we have a, we're talking about one is a license fee, and then one are just fees. So could we maybe get a breakdown of how much is a, or is it one in the same, license and fees? Otherwise, the way that I would understand it would be that if it's inspected every three years, there would just be a one license fee every three years, and I don't know what an annual fee, why there would need to be an annual fee if nothing is getting inspected. Is it just to maintain a database, or?
If I, if I...
I'm just a little confused, so I want to back it up because I'm hearing a couple different things now.
I am, too. So is it the licensing, clarify for us, for us, too, the license is good for three years, right? You get a three-year license. You pay an annual fee for that license for three years, is that correct? Right? So it's $200 per unit for one, $100 for you, $300 for other. And so the license, the three-year license itself isn't a separate fee. You get a three-year license, which is, then you get inspected every three years, right? So there's an inspection every three years, and they pay a fee for that, but on an annual basis, they're paying an annual basis times three. So say it's, so they have a rental license, they pay licenses for three years, but they pay it annually for three years. Is that correct? So, Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're getting convoluted here. The ordinance is the rules we follow. Then the council will pass by resolution the fees, and the fees can be discussed. I think what the purpose of tonight was, was to get public input specifically about the ordinance itself. The fees will happen later as a resolution. If the fees go into the ordinance, then we have to change the ordinance every time we need to change or raise or lower fees. So what will happen is, the council may pass the ordinance establishing the rental code and the safety stuff therein. After that, or congruent to that, we will then pass the fees accordingly. And that will allow us to maintain the safety of the people in town. So honestly, I wish we would have contracted with John to come up tonight to explain this because the idea here is, is that you are taking care of your property every year. We're going to believe you that for three years, you're doing it, but you still need to register your property every year because maybe you stop and you no longer have your property, then you wouldn't be listed as a landlord in the city of Virginia. So I think that's what I'm understanding. I'm not going to try to go through what it is without the people that, maybe we can ask Brett to send John an email to have a very specific. The diligence that was put into this really, it's for the betterment of the community. And I just wanted to make sure that, there's actually two things here. There's the fee schedule, which is by resolution, which is a separate task, and the ordinance, which is part of our city code, which will be on the books, and to change it will take substantial action. So I just wanted to clarify those two parts. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Councilor Johnson. But seeing it's in our packet, it says the proposed rental code fees. So yeah, we'll set the fees, but this is what's proposed through Planning and Zoning. I don't think the ordinance language, I think that's pretty solid. And I think, and I think it's just for us to determine, and questions, that's what we have as public, we need questions for the public landlords particularly, about what is the fee schedule? And as Councilor Johnson alluded to this, we set the fee schedule, so it has to be done. But I think it's appropriate for us to discuss it because it's in this packet. You have questions about it, and we're going to have to discuss that to determine what that fee schedule is going to be. So we'll pass, we'll look at passing ordinance, but we also have to establish the fee schedule as well. And so that's, you're giving us your input on what the fee schedule is and how your concerns about the expenses associated with that. We have to vet that out and balance that with their additional staffing we have to have in order to monitor and control and manage this ordinance as well. So we need to, I think your questions about the fee schedule, we'll have to discuss it amongst ourselves, and we as a council will set the fee schedule. These are just proposed by Planning and Zoning based on their investigation, which is based on a lot of information from a lot of different communities. So it's up to us to determine if this fee schedule is going to go into effect or how we're going to do that. But we'll discuss that. But the ordinance itself will be, will be looking, does anybody have any questions about the ordinance language itself, aside from the fees? Yes, please come forward and state your name for the record and welcome to the meeting.
Good evening. I am Donna Peralta. I am a landlord, and I think you're picking on us landlords. I don't know if anybody agrees with me or not. Why do we have to have a fee to be a landlord for rental? You're going to take in $286,000 for hiring two people to go out and check our properties. Why are you doing this? Why do you not take and go to the property owners if you think our property is garbage there or not taken care of? How many people in our city? Have you drove around there? Have you looked at our city? I'm proud of our city. I'm proud that I'm a landlord. I have great tenants. And it's unfortunate that we have to take and do this to the landlords. I know there's problems with them, but you, I'm not picking on you, Larry.
No.
You know, but as saying, maybe you have a couple of old cars in your backyard, you don't pick up your garbage. Why do you not go to them instead of to us landlords? I am not in favor of this. Fee, for one thing. Why are we paying $300 for a fee? Or helping out people who are in need of rental? I've had, been in this business since 1990. I've had a lot of apartments. I do not have many anymore. But I've taken pride in my buildings and trying to help people. I think this is just going to be a fiasco. I really do. But that's my opinion, and I don't feel that we should be assessed $300 or $200 or $400, whatever it is, to own and help people here in our town. I pay a lot of taxes in this town. You keep your property up, your taxes go up. There's a great deal of rentals in town that don't take care of their property. I'm sure their taxes are much lower than ours that we take care of. And I don't foresee that that should be either. You're talking about spacing for cars to be parked. What would you, what do you plan on doing, you council, for, say, the Sunquist Apartments? They don't have any parking. Are you going to assess them? My tenants all have their own parking, so, but I'm just curious what you plan on doing with that. Apartments that are built on the lot and don't have room for parking? What are you going to do? Somebody tell me? If you're going to have to have, let's see, one bedroom has one space, two bedrooms have a space, three bedrooms have two spaces. They don't have the room for parking. I just use that for an example. But there's other large buildings here in town that don't have space available for And I don't think we should be penalized to keep our properties looking good. I'm not, like I say, in favor of this $300 that we have to pay. I'll pay it, but I'm not in favor of it. I guess that's, I just would like an answer.
Thank you. I guess with respect to the parking, what was the impetus for the parking piece of this ordinance? So if an individual has a fourplex apartment, and currently now they just park on the public street if there's no off-street parking, and they park, use the calendar parking, and if they don't, they get a citation. So I guess my question would be, and I want to put anybody on the spot here, but are we having a problem with rental vehicles parked? I mean, I'm talking about boats or tractor trailers or things, I'm talking about regular parking spots for regular vehicles. Are we having a problem? Do we know? I mean, I'm not aware of any problem that we're having with parking in that regard. So the purpose, so Mr. Hoffman, could you maybe answer that for us? I mean, you guys have done all the research about this, and I guess I'd like to know if you have a kind of an answer or a reason that you made this proposal here for us.
A couple of things, as far as Dawn and I and Mary and the others have discussed, if you do not have a parking space available in your particular, there's no way you can make one, or there's, you know, some of these buildings are three feet between the buildings, and there's nothing in the backend, that this is, present a hardship case, just like coming for, you know, planning and zoning and asking for, you know, a fence or a building, and you had nowhere else to put it, and if it was okay with the neighbors, and this is a hardship situation, it might be considered. Well, this is something for the council to decide, whether this is to be done. I want to address the, excuse me, the parking a little bit more. For example, on, you say 9th Street North, 6th Avenue, up to 10th Street, there are five units in there. Each of them have two-car garages in the back. All of those, of those five units, those two-car garages are not used by the renters. So the renters have to park on the street. And of course, this creates an issue for, you know, plow, snow removal, fire department, all of those things considered. If this does anything for some units, perhaps those garages could be, you know, converted back to what they were meant to be, and that was for parking vehicles and not for storage. And that's what they're being all used for now. And as I said, there are five of those units just on that one block. Now, we've been out, all of us, to a lot of buildings and a lot of places researching, looking at fences and looking at, you know, different properties. There are more, there are lots of them like that. Those are not hardship cases. But again, the hardship falls upon you to whether there is a fee for that or not. So that's all I would comment on that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. That's, appreciate the clarification there. Sir, come on up, if you would please, and state your name for the record and welcome to this meeting.
Hi, Larry. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fickus.
Mark Fickus, my name. Anyhow, like this parking enforcement, okay, like I've got some rentals over on Fifth Street, and I've got a triplex plus a garage apartment on same property. Well, there's only room to park, really, if I really try, two cars in the back. And there's a yard, I mean, if you want to do a curb cutout, you can start parking in the front yard instead of paying the $100, you know? But I'm sure they don't want cars parked in everybody's front yard. I mean, is that legal or not?
It's not.
Right. So I mean, so realistically, us getting charged for the extra cars is going to get passed on to the renters. I mean, everyone's going to do that because nobody wants to take all the cost on themselves. And that 800 bucks, 200, I mean, it's just going to get dispersed between all the renters. They're going to end up paying it ultimately. That's all I have to say. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fickers. Anybody else? Donna?
Again.
Once again, yes, please, thank you.
Uh, we're here to help our tenants, and as a landlord, I have never had to do this, but I understand it's very difficult. What have planning and zoning, or what have, do you have for eviction of a tenant? Has anybody brought this up? It takes about three to four months for a tenant to be evicted. In the meantime, they take a red can of paint and paint all over the cupboards. They put dirty diapers into the dryers, uh, to, uh, and 31 days you must keep their belongings. On the 31st day, they'll come and say, where's my belongings? They haven't moved anything. We've had to move it out. I haven't had to do this, but I know of a landlord that has. And evictions, you have to get a court order, you have to do this, you have to do that. It takes about anywhere from two to four months to get a tenant out. So what has anybody done about this for landlords? I know you're here for the tenants, but I am a landlord, and I love my, my tenants, don't get me wrong, every one of them, and I'm here to help them. But that is one thing somebody asked me to bring up. What do you do and what can you do for evictions? It costs nothing but money to get a tenant out. Maybe they're gonna ruin your apartment in there. They don't pay the rent. They leave garbage all over. Ruin your building. Cost money to take and put new sheet rock and paint up into an apartment to make it look decent for another renter to come in. But after four months, five months, however long it takes, the landlord has got to take and pay an attorney. You gotta go and, and, uh, do the progress of what it takes to eliminate and get rid of a renter. Has anybody thought of how to go about doing that? I mean, that's expense to us. Now we're going to have to pay the expense also of a license for, uh, for, uh, for our apartments. Anyway, I'm just kinda, uh, if you could come up with an idea, um, and, uh, it's an informational meeting, so I guess I'd like some answers.
Uh, thank you. Donna, you just wanna stay just for a moment, and I do know that early on in the process we talked about evictions and how that can be done, and we know, and through our city attorney, I wish he was here, but he had to go to another meeting, that, that's a civil matter. The city can't force people out of evicting out of a, on a, of a private place that's being rented by a private party. I mean, if we had a, uh, if we owned a building, we can't, and they were in penance, we could take eviction, uh, procedures just like a private person takes eviction process, but we don't have, we wouldn't have the authority under an ordinance to evict people on your behalf.
But it says in here that you are for, uh, I suppose I can't find it right away, um, if, if, for heat and, uh, living in the apartment, that that is one thing that you are going to inspect?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if they don't pay their rent, I mean, that's our livelihood, to take and maintain a safe place and a place for rentals.
I, I, I think what it says is that if...
For heat?
If, if, if a tenant doesn't have heat, or doesn't have, you know, isn't, be provided the basic needs...
Water, electricity?
We have the authority to come in and re-inspect, to inspect your property and issue correction orders for you to repair that until, so the tenant has, you know, the, the place that they're living. They have that, they have heat, they have electricity, they have a, a safe place to live.
But that's not responsibility of, um, uh, you said that's a matter for if you're going to evict somebody who doesn't pay their rent or anything?
No, we don't.
I don't agree.
Yeah, but we don't have the authority to evict anybody.
No, we do.
Correct.
But you're not a landlord. You don't know what it takes to take and evict someone.
Well, that's true. I do not.
You know, but anyway, okay, thank you.
Okay. First Counsel Paulson, then over to Counsel Motley. Counsel Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mrs. Peralt. I, I can appreciate a lot of what you're saying, and I believe at one of the, I do wish John Sullivan was here, because I believe at one of our meetings, and I don't know if it was for the landlord-based meeting, but there was a gal that was a landlord, and we were talking about the, the crime-free housing section in the, the proposed ordinance, which has been, um, I guess struck out, but it's, it's gonna be left in there, so we'll have like a template if we go forward. But I believe part of that conversation, landlords were encouraged, if I'm remembering this correctly, landlords were encouraged to adopt as much of that, and it's in here, Donna, it struck out, uh, as much language in the leases that landlords put forward. There's really strong language in here regarding anything that jeopardizes the health, safety, and welfare of the landlord, the landlord or other tenants, guests, tenants of a licensed premises. So they, I guess what they were talking about is mainly strengthening up the language within, so the land, I mean landlords, it is mainly a, the tenants mainly do have most of the rights here in the state of Minnesota, and I used to be a landlord too, and we've gone through the eviction process, we've gone through cleaning dumps out up to your, you know, it's, it's, it's not a fun process to, to happen. So, you know, there, there needs to be some protections in that, and I think one of the discussions at that, one of those meetings was to help or assist landlords write maybe stronger or better contracts for their, with their lease agreements, so that you would have some faster leg to stand on in an eviction process. But I just wanted to address that, number one, and then, um, number two, this is mainly for us going forward, we will not be adopting this crime-free housing section until some later date. Is that correct?
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna consider it.
Well, we would consider it at a later date. Okay, then that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Paulson. Counsel Motley.
Um, Donna, I just wanted to know, how many years again have you been a landlord? You said since 1990?
Nineteen ninety.
Okay, and then, um, nineteen ninety, so quite a few years. And then, it sounds like you've had a pretty, and that's, that's what I'm listening to. It sounds like you've been pretty successful with your tenants, so I'm kinda wondering what you're doing potentially different, I'm just for my own curiosity, than what maybe some other landlords are doing, like, cause you sound like you might be doing something, right? Do you do any background checks or anything with your tenants, or?
Background checks. I have a good rapport with every one of my tenants. I love my tenants, and they love me. And if you're good for them, 99% of the time, it would be possible that there's something that needs to be done in their apartment. I do that, of course, but they are also good for reciprocally, so. But I know there's, you're gonna find that you're gonna...
Counsel Freely, and then, and have you come forward too, sir? Counsel Freely?
So it sounds like some of the unintended consequences that I mentioned earlier are starting to bubble to the surface a little bit. That's the reality. We already heard from one landlord that the costs would be incurred to him that would be passed on to the rent of a renter, potentially. So I mean, that could, this ordinance could in fact raise rents to the point where it's gonna be cost prohibitive for somebody to continue living in a particular apartment. I also don't think it's unreasonable, like Donna's suggesting, you know, you have all these responsibilities that are exclusive to the landlords, there should be some reciprocal responsibilities that are placed on the backs of the tenants as well, that, that they have to, you know, abide by on behalf of the landlord, so that you don't end up having to do what you've mentioned, cleaning up messes and so on. That should fall on the responsibility of that tenant then, if they're gonna make a mess of something, it shouldn't be on your back to take care of that. I think the ordinance should be explicit in saying that you have responsibilities as a tenant too, reciprocally to your landlord, to keep things in a manner in which they could then turn it over and rent to somebody else in the event of a potential eviction or whatever. There should be some safeguards on the part of the landlords as well. Whether the city can do that or not, I would think they could, if it's in the language of an ordinance within the city. So that, those are some of the concerns that I've had. My biggest concern right from the get-go was, we have limited, you know, safe, affordable housing in this city as it is, and a lot of old stock home, homes that are being used for rental units, and when you put an ordinance such as this in place where there's gonna be a significant incurrence of costs to some landlords to bring things up to code, which is obviously necessary to do, but they haven't had to do that up until this point, those costs are gonna be incurred by the landlord, which then ultimately will be in turn burdened by the, by the, by the, by the tenants, from my perspective, that's how I see it, and that's my concern. Will we be forcing people out of places that they're living because of some of the things that are being forced in this? And then, if I can add on to that, when we were talking about the fees, so like if somebody had to pay 300 bucks, does that $300 initially include that licensing fee all packaged into one then, and they get that license now over the next three years, but then they'll pay another 300 each year during those three years? Tentatively, that's what we're proposing. Okay? That too, I mean, is gonna be a cost occurrence that they haven't had to bear in the past, again, which I foresee being placed on to the costs that are gonna be incurred by tenants. I mean, anything that a landlord incurs the cost of is gonna be passed on to the cost of the people that live in their buildings, typically. That's how they make their living. So in any event, those are the unintended consequences that I think have kinda risen to the surface, that are certainly worthy of further discussion and potentially, you know, looking at adding to this ordinance as opposed to just ultimately passing it as is, cause it is in a draft form. So anyway, I, I see there's further discussion that needs to take place, and there may be additional things that need to be thought of to be put into this ordinance that may in fact be protective towards landlords as well, uh, because right now it's exclusively protective of the tenant. Anyway, that's what I'm, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counsel Freely. So as you come forward, come on forward, as you come forward, uh, like I said, this is, this is the draft, or it's the final draft that was presented to us by Planning and Zoning, set a guideline for us for consideration, and it's up to the council to decide, particularly with relation to the language and the fee schedule, so which apparently needs a little bit more discussion with respect to that, and, you know, passing ordinance one, the fee schedule is second, so we have to look at both those things, not only from the fee schedule, from the, from my opinion, the fee schedule that we, that's being proposed to make an adjustment, potentially discuss that, and, you know, and that includes whatever fees are charged for additional parking. But the impetus by Planning and Zoning and the staff was to set a guideline for us, a, a template for us to work from, and that's where we're at right now, and that's why we're having this final meeting, to get that input before we move forward. Sir?
Yeah, have anybody contacted Duluth Ordinance or anything like that, or?
Yes, they certainly have.
Their, their structure is every three years. They don't do an annual fee at all. It's more money. This is gonna be more money than Duluth. So I mean, my brother, my family does this. I've been doing this. I've been coming to these meetings since, probably since Nevada was here, you know, and I hear the same thing all the time. Everybody that's in here, all the landlords that are here, we're not coming after you. You guys are the good ones. 98%, we don't have to worry about you. So it sounds to me like you guys know who the bad ones are. Go after them. You know what I mean? Why come after the people that are here? That's my opinion. I don't, you know, I don't have a problem. You guys come into my units or anything like that, I don't care, but these fees, I mean, it's gonna cost as much as my property taxes. A triplex, it's gonna be $900 a year, a year. That's a lot of money.
That's a lot more than that.
I've got more, I'm just saying, give me an example. I've got a lot of units in this town, you know? That's a game changer for me. So Duluth, it's every three years. It's not every year. There's no annual fees. Hundred percent. So what they do is, it's $40 per bedroom, what they charge, a $300 base fee, then a $100 parking fee. That's it. Every three years. Yep. So I think that really needs to be looked at. I know you guys are gonna pass the numbers, you know, on your own, but man, I really hope not, cause that's kinda scary. Cause I do this for a living, this is my job. So if that's the case, then I might be calling a realtor.
I think the purpose of this meeting is to get this input from you too, because the final draft is being considered, and we have to take the necessary action moving forward, one, for the ordinance itself, and two, the fee schedule too. So the information you're disseminating to us here today, we're gonna have to take a hard look at that fee schedule, how that works, but the guideline that was established through Planning and Zoning is, is a work base for us.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think you guys really gotta work hard on getting on the same page, because just, just today, you guys, I mean, were aware that it's annual. You know, that's a big deal. That's a huge deal. Lot of money.
So i- if I may ask you, the ordinance, setting the fee schedule aside, is there any issues with the ordinance itself?
Well, there's business owners here, right? I mean, numbers are everything.
Numbers are everything.
Numbers are everything. Running a city, it's all numbers. So that's priority, you know? Numbers are everything. I think, I think that's kinda lesson number one, right? Pretty simple to me, but that's just me. As far as the ordinance goes, you know, probably the only complaint I have is the parking thing, you know, but I mean, you know, I mean, what do you do? You fill your yard with class five and have all your tenants park in the yard, you know, not move along? I mean, well, some of it's kinda, I don't really have, am I cut off here or what?
No, 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 not at all. You're welcome.
But everything else, you know, I'm fine with, you know, it doesn't bother me at all. Like I said, I, I make my units as if I were to live in them, you know, and I have lived in a lot of them, so that's the way I am. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Just pay attention to these numbers, you know, if you want. I have spreadsheets, like whenever I buy a duplex or something, I run all these numbers, whether it's renovation costs, property taxes, utilities, and, and increases, and then, you know, the unforeseen, I budget that in there too. I can show you what, how much money you actually don't make.
All right, thank you very much. It seems that the two main issues are the fee scheduling and then the parking issue with the fee there. That seems to be what's coming to the, to the, to the forefront here, and as Counsel Freely alluded to, this is some unintended consequences for us to take a look at, and as Counsel Johnson had indicated, that, you know, there's two separate things to pass the ordinance and look at the fee schedule. We'll have to do that, and we'll certainly take your, all your input very seriously as we move forward, before we pass this ordinance, we'll be discussing the, the issues that you brought up today. Counsel Biondich?
And thank you for all attending tonight. I did go to the public input meetings before, so I do recognize the faces that were there, and I appreciate the input that you gave, and I left one of those meetings thinking, you're not the people we're worried about. You are, you're, you're good. I mean, and, and like we've said, the majority are. I'll give you my, my personal experience with this. We owned a home on Tenth Street North. Nice house. We sold it to a gentleman who had two young children, and they were thrilled to have it. Within two years, he left town. from, we're not picking, it's, the neighbors are calling and telling us, I've gotten, I've dealt with three houses in town where neighbors are saying, help me. The landlord doesn't live here. They don't care. So it's very difficult, because I totally understand, we have great rental units in town, but we also have the other side that we hear from, where neighbors want to stay quiet, because they don't want to be known as the one complaining. But we are dealing with other issues, and I think that's part of where this came from, this rental code ordinance, because it was brought up in 2014, before that. So it's, it's been an ongoing issue. I totally understand also this, this schedule, the fee schedule here, and I, and I'm with you, I would welcome anybody to sit when we have to discuss this, because I think it is important for the public and for you as landlords to help us, because we have to, I know when we, I was at one of the meetings, we talked about, what is it going to cost to have this put into place? We're not here to make money on this. We want to keep our residents safe, and it's just, it's just that, what the fees will, will be, and it's not necessarily what's on this back page, that will just cover the cost of what it would take to have them inspected. And, and I understand, I know that you've been a great landlord, Donna, for many years, and many people have been. But that was, and that's just my personal story on what happened to our house. It went from a perfectly good owner to the bank, to a drug house, went to another drug house. It is now owned by a single woman raising her daughter, which I'm very happy. But the neighbors were all calling me, saying, who did you sell to? Get them out of there. And I'm like, I can't do anything. And I think that happens, so then, you know, it just, it just got brought back up to us. And I know I've sat in at a few of the planning and zoning meetings, and they really do try to think of everything, all the possibilities of what can happen. So that is the reason that, that this is before us, and I totally agree, because I was in business. The numbers are important, and I think as a council, it has nothing to do with the planning and zoning, but as a council, when we look at what the cost will be, I would welcome anybody to come and, and share that and talk about it. So that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Biondich. So, not to belabor, you know, some of the issues here, because we've identified some of the things we need, we need to have to work on here and discuss, with fee schedules, one, part of that is the parking fees, so we'll take, we'll be taking a look at that. There are things that I personally suggested, based on where I used to work at before, to planning and zoning, that never got adopted. So they vetted out a lot of the minutia of some of the suggestions that were made, and one of them that I made was a planning and zoning change, that if there was a single-family home in the city of Virginia, in certain parts of the town, that we zone that area so that you can't convert a single-family home into a rental unit. That's not in here. It was taken out, and probably for good reason, I don't know. But there's a lot of things that, that were in this ordinance, that were suggested in this ordinance, that comes from other communities, that got vetted out during this process. So I think the ordinance has some solid language in there, it's just a matter of the fee schedules, and we'll have to determine and talk about that. So it's both, but we will, we'll talk about that more before we adopt this, this ordinance, and I'll likely have to be talking about the fee schedule for sure. So that's the purpose of this meeting, for us to talk about it amongst ourselves, obviously we needed some answers too, and we got input from you, and so we, you've given us some marching orders moving forward to talk about certain concerns that you have with respect to this ordinance, and we're certainly assured that we'll be discussing those. And coming up with whatever, whatever our final proposal is going to be, and that'll go out to everybody as well. So does anybody else have anything that they'd like to add before we move forward? Donna, please come forward, thank you.
I have one thing I'd like to ask Planning and Zoning. What do you propose with our Rishlu, Columbia, the Alice Nettle, are those also going to be?
Yes.
For every apartment that is in there?
Yes.
They are? Okay. That's all I wanted to know. About the housing, the High Mill Court and so on, are they also going to be included in that?
Yes.
What now?
AEOA.
Why would they be involved?
Primary court is the HRA. And the HRA has their own federal inspections of those facilities as well.
Oh, you're saying if you include one, you're including them all? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Mary. Mr. Byrd, before we conclude?
Excuse me, just one last thing here. The, the fees, I'll be honest with you, that was a tough one. We originally were set up with the ones from 2014, which are half. It was made clear to us right from the start that the fire department was going to have anybody extra to do the inspections. They're two people short now, I'm told, or the police department, one or the other. These places are already short of personnel. So it was made clear to us by engineering, the city, that this is going to have to be able to fund itself. And, so it was kind of like reverse engineering, we need two people, somehow we have to come up with it. I'm just being completely honest. We have to come up with enough money to pay for two people. If there's some other money available out there, could, could cut these down to one-fourth of what they are. It's just, it's down to dollars and cents, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd.
Yeah, and it's obviously up for discussion.
Well, you set a baseline for us to consider, and it's important for us to, you know, you have some kind of a baseline, so, thank you. So anything else before we conclude this evening? Anybody else that wants to come forward? Mr. Fickus, would you please come, would you just come forward here to the microphone? And the reason I ask you is because we're recording this for the general public.
So this $286,000, so you had two people doing this, right? They're going to be doing the inspections?
Maybe more than two.
Oh, okay. So I was just wondering, so each guy is getting $143,000 to do this?
No, there's, there's salary, benefits, administrative costs, legal fees, those kind of things.
Okay. Ever thought about, you're doing these inspections and everything, the landlords that are doing a great job keeping their properties up and everybody's happy, giving them a credit, you know, towards, towards doing a good job, you know, versus these guys that aren't taking care of their properties? You know, because you're doing a lot more work inspecting the ones that aren't so good.
Well, you may, you may bring up a point that we need to discuss, no doubt.
All right, thank you.
I agree, personally.
I would live in every one of my apartments.
Donna, would you want to come up and repeat that, so everybody else can hear over here? I'd appreciate that very much, we would.
I, I said I am very particular where I live, and I would live in any one of my apartments. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, we have some marching orders, we have some work to do. Thank you, everybody, for coming. So one last opportunity for anybody to come and speak tonight. Anybody from the council? Say none, thank you, everybody, for coming, thank you for your patience, thank you for your input, and we have some work to do. So we'll adjourn this meeting, it's at 6:50 PM. Thank you, everybody, have a good evening.